Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the March 21st School Board meeting. We have a record crowd in this room today, and a few people online. So we'll go ahead and get started, and I'll call the meeting to order. And who's, Mr. Borbitt, you're introducing our pledges?
Yes, I'm going to do the pledge.
Thank you.
They're good. All right, so, end of the year, last year, around this time for the board reading, I had thought about bringing some 4th grade students to share some reflections about their time at BEES. It's that time of year where schools are, doesn't necessarily feel like it in the moment, we're beginning to wind down. Education out there can attest to, and parents for how your kids are feeling. So I had communicated with the 4th grade teachers that we were looking for some students who might be good representation, good representatives of their grade level, not just for, you know, their efforts in the classroom, but just really solid overall, well-rounded kids, right? Just kind of examples of students that, you know, we hope to have at BEES who, you know, are going to work hard in the classroom, who are going to be kind and thoughtful, you know, who are involved in things outside of school as well. And so I'm excited to introduce you to three of our 4th grade students. We have Odette Kratten.
Hi.
We have Ben Bush. And Eric Park. So they're going to share some, just brief reflections with you on their time at BEES, and then, and then we'll leave a pledge.
I will die, and I'm going to miss my other friends in 3rd, 1st, 3rd, 2nd, and 1st. I will also miss crafts that the staff had made for me, along with the fun things we did to our principal, like slamming him and duct taping him to a wall.
You could still do that. Easy.
Hi. Hi. Hi, I'm in 4th grade. One of the best things in BEES is UA. There is art, P.E., computer, library, and music. And I love that Mr. Borbitt is the principal. And I cannot wait to be in middle school, to see what is there, and do all the cool activities that middle school brings.
He's like, "Damn." Love it.
Hi, my name is Eric, and I will be talking about what I will miss when I leave BEES. The first thing that I'm going to miss is the playground. What I've heard, the BMS playground is small, and it's more soccer fields than the regular playground. Um, what I love about the BEES playground is the structure in the middle of the grounds. I also like the big yellow slide that just got added this year.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, veritable, and just for all.
Now back to Mr. Borbitt.
This one's an entertainer.
Oh, yeah.
So to thank you for coming and sharing what you liked most of BEES, we have a little token, a little American flag. It's great to hear what great kids you are. We look forward to hearing more about you and your middle school years and beyond, and thanks for coming. All right, so we are up to approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to move the Select Board update right underneath the approval of the minutes, please.
Second.
After the Educational Excellence Award. Oh, so before the minutes? Okay, just kidding, before the minutes.
I'll second that one, too.
All right, okay. Any discussion? Was there any other amendment?
Oh, yes, oh my gosh. And also to add, non-public, at the end of the meeting citing reason, RSA 91A 32A. Yes, whatever, since it's not typed. 91A 32A. A 32A.
Close. Close right off the tongue.
You still seconding that?
Sure.
All right, any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. So, Champions for Children Awards.
I'm just going to hand it right over.
Thank you, Mrs. Seeley.
Yeah, I'm very excited. I have to have a reflection like the students. I have to write things out. So bear with me, I did shorten it. But I couldn't shorten it too much, because I think there's a lot to say about Wendy. So Wendy, would you come on over here? So this is an award that, you know, is from the school district, the leadership team, the board, and certainly staff and children. And at our leadership team meeting, we were like, "Oh, you know, Champion for Children, let's brainstorm who." And I kind of said, "Well, Ms. Wendy." And we were like, "Well, she must have already gotten it." And we had to come actually look, because we thought, well, she must have, because she's done so much for children. But you hadn't, so today's your day. So I'm going to read a little bit about you. You'll be okay. In every community, there are unsung heroes whose dedication and passion shape the lives of those around them. In Barrington, one such hero emerges in the form of Ms. Wendy, the children's librarian at the Barrington Town Library. Wendy is not just a librarian, she's a champion of children, tirelessly working to instill a love of reading and learning in the young minds of her community. Wendy's commitment to fostering literacy begins with her deep connection to the ECLC. Regularly, she reads to preschool and kindergarten students. These visits are more than just storytelling sessions, they are opportunities for children to embark on literary adventures, explore new worlds, and expand their imaginations. By engaging with children at such a young age, Wendy plants the seeds of literacy, setting them on a path towards a lifelong love of reading. Wendy's dedication to promoting literacy extends beyond the walls of the library. During the summer months, she organizes and leads engaging reading programs that children, keep children excited about books, even when school is out. These programs not only bolster reading skills, but foster a sense of community among young readers. To achieve this, Wendy visits the schools, dressed in some sort of fun costume, so they can see what this year is, that reveals the summer reading theme. Her energy and enthusiasm are contagious, motivating students to explore literature during their summer vacation. In addition to her outreach efforts, Wendy actively promotes literacy through various initiatives within the library. She advocates for all kindergarten students to obtain a library card. This is a very big deal. By encouraging children to become library card holders from this age, she really instills a sense of ownership and responsibility for their reading journey. Wendy champions the 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program, encouraging caregivers to read with their young children, and reach the milestone of reading 1,000 books before starting kindergarten. She provides great stone-faced books for elementary and middle school students, she organizes clubs and crafts for all ages, toddlers to teenagers. She's a resource to teachers, always willing to deliver books needed for any area of study, again, fostering a culture of reading and lifelong learning within the Barrington community. Wendy's dedication to promoting literacy is seen also at our annual Polar Express event. This event brings the story of the Polar Express to life, captivating children and sparking their imaginations. Her collaboration with the ECLC, the REC Department, the Barrington School Foundation, again demonstrates her commitment to working hand-in-hand with community partners to create meaningful and memorable experiences for children. Wendy shines truly as a guiding light in Barrington, advocating for children through the power of literature and literacy programs. Her steadfast dedication to promoting literacy, her passion for storytelling, and her commitment to empowering all of Barrington's childrens to become readers, thinkers, and achievers, makes her a genuine hero, a true champion for children in our Barrington community. Thank you. She did already receive an award. We had all kindergarten students embarked upon a field trip to the library, but her award was a quick paper plate glitter thing. But here's your real plaque, so congratulations. And then the other, the real award here, is you have one of George Clark's chocolate chip cookies. Like, this is a big deal. So, there you go. Do not have to share it with your grandchildren. And they're all here. But you can, so thank you. George, it's happy, it's a lot of family. So thank you.
Thank you, thank you so much. This is such an honor, and something, I was so shocked last Friday, but I love my job, and I love reading to the children, and it's the best. I don't know too many people who can say that they love like 96, 7% of their job, and I love my job every day. So I'm very blessed, but thank you so much for this.
Always a teary man. Sorry.
I didn't help it, sorry. Like, how do I help? I didn't do it.
Can I tell a quick story, mom and dad, real quick?
No.
Just real quick, she's my mother-in-law. I just want to tell the story, because this is so funny. I don't know how many of you guys know Wyatt Lizaq, but him and Caleb now are 17, and so when they were, I think, how old?
I think they were in, I think they were in 1st grade.
1st grade? Wyatt came over to our house, and there was a picture of Wendy holding somebody, I don't know who it was, and Wyatt looks at Caleb and goes, "You know her?" The best of him.
Yeah, yeah, it's a great story. I have a similar one, where I took my son to a pancake breakfast up at Union, and I said, "Well, Ms. Wendy will be there." And no disrespect to Wendy, the OT that used to work here, but she was the Wendy that was there. And I said, "Oh, Ben, look, Ms. Wendy's here." And he said, "That is not Ms. Wendy." It's like, okay, so, we could go on and on, Wendy, but we won't, you know? Yeah, so. Take them. Good evening. We are here on behalf of the Barrington School Foundation, a local, all-volunteer nonprofit organization that was started in 2000 with the purpose of supporting Barrington's children and schools. The Barrington School Foundation's flagship initiative is to promote early literacy. We sponsor Barrington's participation in the Dolly Parton Imagination Library, where children birth to age five receive an age-appropriate book in the mail each month, and we host Jump Start to Literacy events. We also support innovation and educational projects, and collaborate with other organizations to support Barrington's children. And why we are here tonight, to recognize excellence in education with an annual award. For the past 20 years, we have recognized Barrington educators who go above and beyond. We want to highlight how hard they work, their ability to reach out to and connect with students, their creativity, and how they make Barrington schools so amazing. Our nomination form states that by word and deed, their presence has enriched the lives of students and served as an example for all. This year's recipient, Jess Linden, truly embodies the spirit of this award.
She works with Barrington students at all of our schools, from the Early Childhood Learning Center through all of our high schools. Her colleagues describe her as hardworking, detail-orientated, and easy to collaborate with. She is also empathetic and caring in each and every one of her interactions with students. Part of being a BCBA requires being in the presence of significant behaviors that can be unexpected and challenging. She handles each situation with ease and with care. Student safety and integrity are always her priority. She makes sure students feel loved and important. Jess's passion for her work is evident in every interaction she has with students, colleagues, and parents alike. She possesses a remarkable ability to listen attentively to concerns, and she brings empathy and understanding to each situation. Jess's approachability and willingness to collaborate make her an invaluable asset to the district. One of Jess's greatest strengths is her depth of knowledge in the field of behavior therapy. Her expertise is evident in her meticulous approach to developing and implementing behavior plans tailored to meet the unique needs of each student. What truly sets Jess apart is her unwavering commitment to fostering a supportive and inclusive learning environment for all students, regardless of their challenges or abilities. Jess constantly presents new ideas that are student-centered and data-driven. She openly communicates with all stakeholders working with her caseload to gather as much information as possible to find the root sources of frustrations for her students. Then she works to find new ways to support them in the classroom so they are successful. Jess's flexibility when working with IEP teams is exemplary. She approaches each collaboration with an open mind, readily adapting her strategies to align with the evolving needs of her students and the team. Her cooperative spirit and willingness to go above and beyond to ensure the success of her students is truly commendable. Her ability to communicate with families and navigate difficult topics is another one of her many strengths. All the information she shares is clear, concise, and sensitive to the experiences that the families have with their students. All of her information is data-based and organized in a manner that is family-friendly and paired with solutions to continue leading students towards success. It is obvious with her interactions with families that she's a well-respected and integral part of the Barrington community. Her positive attitude is another admirable trait. Jess will do whatever is asked of her without complaint. She makes sure that she and the staff she's working with always have the best interest of the students in mind. We are delighted to present Jess with this year's Excellence in Education Award, which includes the fabulous cookie, and a $500 check from the Barrington School Foundation. Thank you so much for your passion, expertise, and genuine commitment to the betterment of our educational community.
You don't have to slink, we're used to people leaving.
It's perfectly fine.
I take that personally, but not the word. No, I wouldn't say either.
Dan, really, you can raise your report on.
I actually don't have a great deal to report today, frankly. I do appreciate putting me back at the end of your agenda, but then, the reason is because I also go to the library board meeting before, usually, but now the library board is here, and we're meeting afterwards, so I appreciate you moving me up in this. Again, I think one of the really important things just happened here today, is to show that the town, through the library, and I don't want to say it's all the town, but certainly entities in the town and the school can really cooperate quite well. And I think this is a great example, and Wendy's a great example of how the library, the town's library can work with the school and the school board. The other thing is, we did select members of the TIF Advisory Committee, which will include Garth, as well as four others and two alternates, and they will start meeting to discuss the TIF District, and more particularly, the area behind Kalif's, and we'll begin to work with that. And hopefully, that will also integrate the school as well as that. I really appreciate your representatives coming to the school board. They make it very easy, because I usually report on what I do at the end, and they've all given their report, and I just say, "Like them." So thank you very much, and thanks for moving me up. Depending on the school board, or depending on the library board, we'll see whether I would like to be at the beginning or the end of this thing. Thank you very much for accommodating me.
Thank you, Dan. All right, approval of the minutes, public minutes from May 7th, and two sessions of non-public minutes from May 7th, before and at the end of the meeting. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, so we're up to public comment. I don't think Dan has anything else to add, since he just spoke. Anyone online? Just raise your hand, and we'll unmute you. I don't see any, do you see any, Dan? All right, there is another opportunity for public comment. If you are burning to share, get that hand up, and we'll get to you at the second opportunity. Okay, nominations?
Nominations, so two, we have an additional one that I just put in front of you from a squeezed-in interview during this busy hiring season. So excited to put forward three for this evening. 4th grade special education teacher, Ms. Lynn Guyer, 4th grade classroom teacher, Ms. Annabelle Boyle, and computer science teacher, Ms. Jennifer Warren.
Are there seven nominations?
I'll second.
Any discussion?
Welcome to the district.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Welcome to the district. All right, so, board member participation in future contracts, negotiations.
So last time we left off with a lot of interest in that process, which is exciting, and so the board had asked that I, you know, seek into whether that then creates a quorum of the board, and, you know, what the sort of legal answer to that is. So because it's not a public notice meeting, it is permissible to have three people, however, because you're negotiating, not advisable. Because basically, you're, because you already have a quorum, you then release your leverage to then go back and say, "Oh, we need to discuss this with the full board," much like the teachers do on their side of the table, where they have representation, but they have the ability to go back to their full membership for that final kind of discussion and decision-making. So, that's the follow-up from last time.
Madam chair, if I may?
Yeah.
I'd like to remove myself from consideration at this time.
So I think that leaves us with Mr. Baker and Ms. Neal as our negotiators. Any discussion on that? All right, go forth and negotiate.
Elegant way to start that committee. All right, and I think we're up to superintendent report. So I'm going to do my best here, you know, I don't like a formal report, it's not my style, but I think it will help with consistency in reporting information moving forward. So just trying this format on for size as we go into kind of that new cycle starting in July for our next year. So any feedback is appreciated afterward, if we see a few of them. So hiring personnel, quick update there, we just heard our new nominations tonight. So, you know, we always have a little movement late in the game, so I don't want to sound too optimistic and positive at this point. However, we right now have very few positions remaining open. So 8th grade special education teacher is open. We do our part-time nurse, speech assistant. We are always seeking a couple pair of professionals at the end of the year, but one or two at this point, very few. And we do have received a couple of applicants for the proposed Registered Behavior Technician position in order to support some high-need students. So hopeful with hiring processes right now. If I could give a question?
Looking at me?
Yeah.
No.
Oh, okay. I'll continue then, excellent. So some building highlights, as we know, we just celebrated Teacher Appreciation Week, which is no question.
Just generally buzzed.
Which was a great week, as we all know, so spread a whole bunch of sunshine around the district, and just want to thank everybody who participated in that. Also, as we know, because you generously paid their registration fees, we have our students who are off to the invention convention as well, so that was great showing. I also included some highlights from some pen pal letters that went back and forth from Belize, which is always a wonderful experience to see how proficient, maybe not wonderful, but it's amazing to me how proficient other countries are at the English language, both written and verbal. Financial update, we have very few weeks left in the fiscal year. You know, Vicki always worries, but we always tend to be okay. So at this point, it looks pretty promising that we will be able to fund capital reserves that voters approved, as well as some additional facilities, projects that we had hanging. So we will make those decisions as it gets closer, and we know the bottom line. Committee updates, policy committee, we meet next week, actually, continuing to work through the K folder. Additionally, we consider policy LDA again, the student teaching. In interns, there was confusion versus process and policy, but we discussed that as we were doing first and second grade, so just an update there. It did come back around, so I am going to bring it back to the policy committee again. Policy has had a lot of attention, it's been interesting. Sometimes that happens when practice and policy don't match because they're old. So it came back around because there's some language in there proposed from NHSBA around the number of days that an intern is allowed to sub. And due to substitute shortages, and some institutions allow their interns to sub because it provides great practice, and there's still obviously people providing oversight, but we do use them when appropriate. So I'm going to bring it back to policy committee to have some further discussion around that. I've looked at area districts, and they're inconsistent, so we'll do some additional digging there. The wellness committee met on May 9th. The major focus of discussion there was around energy drink consumption, mostly at the middle school age level. We don't sell them anymore, but they still come in and out, so that's a pretty big concern from a wellness perspective, and also cell phone use policy. So we're going to continue to examine the handbook, the code of conduct, policy on cell phone use, and that committee asked the policy committee to take a look at some of those procedures. So we'll close the loop on that. Let's see, we've had some good feedback on the high school survey of community choice that went out. Just a big picture right now, I haven't done the tabulation yet, but most responses are saying, yes, on our high school choice, we want to keep all three of our choices. I don't know if there's a real surprise there, but that's how those results are looking overall. We talked about teacher contract negotiations already. Portrait of a Learner, talk about great survey results. I wish we always got this kind of survey result. So we had 713 responses to that, and that committee has really been, just like Mission and Vision, a really great group to work with. We had a scheduling blip during
We had a scheduling blip during our last committee date, so we need to do a reschedule. But it happened on one of those beautiful sunny days, so people didn't mind leaving. So we'll continue that work. We probably have another meeting or two to tie up that information and then we'll bring all that work to the board for consideration, just like we did with Mission and Vision. We already did the update for the district and town collaboration. Another exciting opportunity that we have, for the first time because they changed some rules, Community Action Partnership out of Dover. We now qualify, as long as one school in your district qualifies based on your free and reduced percentage, the entire town can take advantage of free summer meals. So that information will be going out to families soon. To, we're going to just be in the parking lot of the middle school once a week. And the other good part about that, when it's a rural, ooh, nice job, that's a good word for me, when it's a rural location, is you're allowed to then do weekly meals as opposed to when it's city, it has to be every day. So that will be a new opportunity for families over the summer months when they rely on schools' breakfast and lunch programs during the school year. So that is new for us. And then I just continued to list the May and June dates that are scrolling on our calendar of upcoming events. So that is what is going on. Thank you.
Any questions or comments?
I love the format.
Excellent.
I thought it was, it just was really digestible. Because there's always a lot of information in them, but it's in paragraph form. It's like hard to disseminate the information. So I liked, I really liked this, I think this is great.
Well, I'm gonna throw the kudos to Laura Bailey because Laura is a chart girl. And so I emailed her and said...
That's embarrassing, or...
No, it's not, because I'm verbal, right? So I was like, Laura, I have a whole bunch of thoughts in my head and let's do some brainstorming. And she was like, you know I love a good chart. So we talked and brainstormed and then she spit out organizational tools. And so the exciting thing is it's not just superintendent report, but it will be all SAU department area reports will have the same look and structure as well as the principal reports moving forward. So it will be, you know, it's always easier to digest the information when it's in a format that's familiar to you, right? So let's just start getting those processes in place.
It was nice to see the committee updates, too, because we're not all on the same committee, so that's good.
Right.
Thank you.
So if there's headings that you want me to add, let me know. But I figured I'd share a few and we'll go from there.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, so we're up to policies.
Apologies, policies. So it is the second read for Superintendent eval and Goal Setting Policy as well as the procedure for goal setting and evaluation, F1 and F2.
I understand is we're kinda doing this as a trial period?
I make a motion to approve the following policies for second read. CBI, Superintendent Evaluation and Goal Setting. CBI-F1, which is the goal-setting procedure. And F2, the evaluation procedure.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right, we're back to our public comment.
Is this a record? Is this a short?
Oh, he's back.
Do you have a moment online if you want to speak?
This is when Dan goes into rant.
Sorry. Let me parlay this, is I'm speaking certainly just as a one-person taxpayer and not anything to do with the select board or the town governance at all. But for those of you who are gonna be part of this contract negotiations, I really would like to emphasize, my personal opinion is that you shouldn't be looking at just average prices for these people. You need to make sure they're above that because we want teachers who are above the average for this community. So I hope that you, obviously you want to watch very closely the dollars involved here, but I certainly don't want you to short these teachers because we really need good teachers. That's, again, a very personal thing, has nothing to do with any governance. That's just one person's opinion, but thank you very much.
Thank you. Any hands online? All right, Dana, I'll entertain a motion to go into non-public.
I make a motion to enter non-public.
Citing?
Citing RSA 91A-32A.
What's the program?
Three, what is it?
What's it for?
91, 32A, right? What's the RSA again?
91A.
A-32A. A-32A. What's in your non-public?
For personnel.
Personnel, yep.
Personnel, yeah.
I'll second.
All right, is there a second? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you, everyone. We're moving, right?